All right, it is now 7:00 PM and I'm calling to order the Regular Board of Education Meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Tuesday, February 8th, 2022. Jeanne, will you please call the role?
Mr. Carubas. You can hear me? Can you hear me?
Can you unmute?
I am on mute. You can hear me?
Unmute Justin Carubas, he does not have the ability to do so right now.
Oh, okay. Sorry, he's here though. Okay, I'm, hold on one second.
I'm good now, thank you. I'm here.
Now you're muted, Jeanne.
Mark Rising. Mark?
Yes, unmute him too, I believe, and the other board members.
Okay. Hold on one second. Technical difficulty. I am going to unmute everyone now. Okay, is everyone off mute? All board members?
Yes. Can you unmute yourself, Natasha?
Okay, I don't know why that is.
Okay.
Is everyone on mute? Natasha?
I'm good.
Okay, I'll go through the role. Let's start this over. Mr. Carubas.
Here.
Mr. Rising.
Here.
Ms. Demming.
Present.
Ms. Grover.
Here.
Ms. Donahue.
Here.
Ms. Jane.
Here.
Ms. Fastic.
Here.
Okay.
Are we okay with the streaming? Because Mark was saying in the chat that there was, it wasn't streaming onto YouTube.
Let me check with Clayton.
Okay.
We are streaming on YouTube. We had a technical difficulty as far as connecting to the scheduled YouTube, but we are live on YouTube. If people go to the YouTube channel, they will see live now School Board Education, Board of Education meeting for today. So we are live on YouTube. We also are recording.
Okay, with the streaming, because Mark was saying in the chat that there was, it wasn't streaming onto YouTube.
Let me check with Clayton.
We are streaming on YouTube. We had a technical difficulty as far as connecting to the scheduled YouTube, but we are live on YouTube. If people go to the YouTube channel, they will see live now School Board Education, Board of Education meeting for today. But we are live on YouTube. We also are recording.
It was streaming. Mark was saying in the chat that there was, it wasn't streaming onto YouTube. I think we're hearing some replay of what we just did.
Yeah, it's a 30-second delay. We have a 30-second delay on here. Okay, so I think we're good to go.
Okay, so Ms. Jane, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes.
Ms. Jane, if you could just wait for the flag to appear.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Our next Board of Education meeting will be held Monday, February 28th, 2022. As you know, Board of Educations are bound by strict provisions of the Open Meetings Act. As President, I have determined that an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent due to the pandemic. With this onset of the COVID virus, some of our OMA guidelines have been relaxed. Specifically, board members do not have to be physically present. As a result, video or audio conferencing is allowed. Boards are encouraged to provide video or audio access to the meetings in order for the public may monitor the meetings. All other Open Meeting Act requirements remain in place. A quorum of the board must participate. All meetings must be open to the public, except any portion of the meeting that is closed for one or more reasons in the act. The meeting also must include an opportunity for public comment. Requirements relating to meeting notices, agenda minutes, and remain applicable. Please know that our board will continue to meet these requirements in these challenging times. So we did attempt to have a meeting yesterday, but we're not able to hold our meeting, and we do have business to conduct tonight. So we'll start with board salutes and if Ms. Fastic would read the first two.
Okay. Come in, can you hear me? Okay, great. First one, Matia Valley students chosen for Special Olympics Unified Football World Cup team. The board salutes Matia Valley Special Olympics athletes Grace Ramsburg and MJ Palmquist, along with Carter Bragoon, Unified Peer, for being selected as part of the Special Olympics Second Unified Football World Cup Team for North America. The North America team has both a female and a male team playing in a World Cup. This is a huge accomplishment for these athletes, as only nine Special Olympics athletes and seven unified partners made the male and female teams in the nation. These athletes will compete in the World Cup in Detroit, Michigan this summer with 31 other nations from around the world. Congratulations to Grace, MJ, and Carter in this outstanding achievement. The second one is Niqua Valley recognized for literacy pilot program. The board salutes Niqua Valley for being recognized for a first-of-its-kind literacy pilot program developed by the Stanford History Education Group. For the last two years, Niqua Valley has been taking part in a pilot program, integrating news literacy into subjects like biology and geography. The curriculum teaches how to identify reliable sources, misinformation, and politically or financially motivated sources. For the 2022-2023 school year, curriculum such as this will become mandatory across the state. Congratulations to Niqua Valley on this recognition.
Oh, my turn, my turn. Okay, the board salutes Wabonzi Valley alumni Yi Jun Kim will be competing in the Jeopardy National College Championship. As a Naperville native who is majoring in chemical engineering at Northwestern University, Yi Jun is the only representative from Illinois, from an Illinois college or university in the competition. Thirty-six students from across the country will compete. The episodes will be broadcast on ABC Seven at 7:00 beginning tonight, but I actually saw that Yi Jun's episode is going to air tomorrow night. So congratulations, good luck Yi Jun, and we'll be rooting for you. The board salutes Ashka Yana Thata from Gregory Middle School, who captured first-place title at the 2022 Indian Prairie School District Spelling Bee on Tuesday, February 1st. And Advita Thayer from Crowne Middle School took second place, and Raya Ramish from Granger Middle School won third place. Twenty-one students from seven middle schools participated in the event. The top three students will compete in the ComEd DuPage County Finals on February 23rd. And we, congratulations, Ashka Gania, Athita, and Raya.
And Ms. Grover.
Yes. Wabonzi Valley shines at Cyber Patriot National Youth Cyber Defense Competition. The board salutes Wabonzi Valley students Evan Kigstrup, Rami Nasir, and Nele Ranjan as they competed in the 14th Cyber Patriot National Youth Cyber Defense Competition and placed first in the state of Illinois and 26th in the national semifinals. The competition simulates real-world cybersecurity scenarios and requires students to find and fix weak security policies within Windows 10, Windows Server 2019, and Ubuntu 20 operating systems. The teams have a six-hour window to complete all of these challenges. Cyber Patriot was created by the Air Force Association's National Youth Cyber Education Program. This was Wabonzi Valley's first year participating in this event. Congratulations to these students on the stellar performance. I have another one. District 204 students excel in the middle school robotics tournament. The board salutes District 204 middle school students and staff who participated in the robotics tournament at Niqua Valley High School Burkett Freshman Center this weekend. Congratulations to the tournament champions, which in the morning session were the Gregory Alpha Squad and the Crowne Team B, Hill Team A, and Still Bulldogs Number Two were the afternoon champions. The Still Bulldogs Number Two also won the Excellence Award. All of our seven middle schools won awards at the tournament, including Hill Team A and Crowne Team A as Skills Champion, Granger Team A for Design Award, Hill Team A for Innovate Award, Crowne Team D for the Judges Award, and Fisher 209R for the Sportsmanship Award. Congratulations to all the robotics team, and thank you to the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation for supporting this robotics tournament experience. We look forward to the elementary school tournament on Friday, March 11th, and Saturday, March 12th.
Thank you. I attended the robotics tournament and it was amazing what these kids can put together. So thank you to everyone. It's now time for public comment. Sixty minutes is allowed for public comment, and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students, school, and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep your comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting, but follow-up may be provided by an administrator as appropriate. We have 11 speakers tonight, and the first speaker is Chris Bond. It's Chris on here.
Okay, Lori, I'm just checking. His name is not on the attendees, but he may be a call-in. So let me see if he can raise his hand so I can choose him.
I think you're muted, Jeanne.
I'm seeing if Chris Bond can raise his hand, because he may be a call-in.
Maybe we'll go to the second speaker and we'll see if he joins.
Okay, thank you.
The second speaker is Amy Philippon.
Go to the next, Lori.
Next, okay.
Well, you know what, and then what we'll do is we'll go through the callers and I'll ask to have their name.
Okay. Audrey Martin.
Next.
Emma Belazsky.
Next.
Karen Zat.
Next.
Auntie Belagama.
Belagama, yes. Oh, wow, yes, one second.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, thank you. So I just want to start by saying that I was at the meeting last night, and I was incredibly disappointed that the board walked out, except for the two folks that stayed. I thought that was just very poor form. You know, there was parents waiting there to be heard, concerned parents, parents that have things to say. And y'all walked out and didn't address us, and it was over what I would call a technicality. And I know that might seem over dramatic, but, and I don't want to, I don't want to fight about this anymore. I don't want to throw stones, but I do have to state the facts here. Dr. Chely was at a superintendent's conference in the fall when there was a mask mandate, and he spoke without a mask. And today I emailed him about it, and he said he did. And I have pictures that have surfaced from that where there are people in the audience without masks. But instead of walking offstage or putting a mask on at that time, he continued to speak. No one put him in a corner and told him to isolate, no one told him to go home. But that's exactly what we're doing to the kids in school. By his own rules, today, if someone comes without a mask, if they were to get up and speak in front of an audience like he did at that conference, then they would be sent into a room to isolate and the next day sent home. So we are willing to do that to children, but we're not willing to follow the same rules ourselves. So that essentially just takes away all credibility. And like I said, I'm tired of fighting about it, and I don't want to cast stones, but those facts need to come to light, because if you're going to make rules, then you can't make them if you're not going to follow them yourselves. And this is what it comes down to. You're not representing the people in the community. As you saw last night, there's a large contingent of people in this community that want masks optional. You saw it last year when you received more than 50% of votes saying they wanted no masks. I would ask, did any of you on the board vote for masks optional on Sunday? Did one, did two? Right? Because somewhere between 40% to 60% of our community wants masks optional. And if your votes were unanimous or close to unanimous against masks optional, you're simply not representing our voices. I know that voter turnout is often low in board elections, and that's going to change, because now people are seeing the implications of it. But you're still supposed to represent the entire community. And with such a large contingent wanting masks optional and to give no credence to that is to me just shameful, and you're not fulfilling your obligations. Your job is not to take what you believe and figure out a way to push that through the agenda in the board. It's to represent the voice of the people regardless of what your feelings are on it, and that is not being represented today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori?
Yes.
We can go to Karen Zat.
Okay, Karen Zat, so it's the next speaker.
Karen? Karen?
Karen, are you there? If you are, you need to unmute. Okay. Okay, I see.
This is Karen. Karen Zat? Karen, are you there?
All right, I see Amy in the chat, Amy Philippon. So do you want to do?
I just unclicked her to speak. Amy, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, Amy. Awesome, okay. First, I'd like to thank the board for their leadership in our community during this unprecedented time. I think it's fair to say that over the last two years, we've learned a lot about how to function in a pandemic, which involves changing or evolving protocols as we learn more about the virus and accumulate more data on the efficacy of vaccines and masks. We can all play Monday morning quarterback, but that's simply not possible in a fluid situation. I know you have good intentions. Masking is the most minimally invasive approach that works and allows our kids to actually be in school. I'll spare you the data, you've all seen it. We know masking isn't perfect. There's lunchtime, there are sports exemptions. But that's the thing, those are exceptions, not the norm. It's a calculated risk to try to resume normalcy. Even with the exceptions, masking the majority of the school day significantly lowers the spread. If I could make one recommendation to the board, it would be to allow additional exceptions for specific disabilities or circumstances covered by an IEP when community transmission isn't high. No one is in favor of masking forever or unnecessarily. As other states start to pull back mask requirements, it's important to define the indicators that would call for eliminating the requirement based on community transmission and other data points that our health department experts recommend. We're almost there, but right now it's a small price to pay and a good lesson in citizenship, citizenship, and empathy for our kids. Speaking of citizenship and empathy, these are two competencies that District 204 includes in our portrait of a graduate, along with resilience, flexibility, and others. Parent voices are an important part of school board decision-making. As parents advocate for their children, they should also model for their children how to engage in civil discourse about high-stakes matters. We would do our children well if we as a community could demonstrate these competencies and values. Debate, discourse, and conversations about controversial topics are all normal, but willfully violating safety mitigations and efforts to disrupt are not. As a member of this community, I take issue with having to end yesterday's board meeting because of this uncivil discourse. Engaging in personal attacks is not a reflection of these values. Putting enormous amounts of unrealistic pressure where our teachers are leaving in droves the profession across the US is not a reflection of these values. Comparing masking to civil rights violations experienced by marginalized groups is not a reflection of these values. We are all in this together, like it or not. Masking is not forever. We need to get back to being a community that cares about each other. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori, Chris Bond is on next.
Okay, Chris Bond will have you next.
All right, you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Christopher Bond, and I have two District 204 children. I'll get right to the point. This district should follow the science and not ignorance and conspiracy theories when deciding what COVID mitigations are necessary. The science should be based on regulations and guidance offered by the state of Illinois, Will and DuPage County Department of Public Health Services, and this board's own agreed-upon metrics. Therefore, I 100% encourage this board to stand by its decision from Sunday and keep mask and other mitigations in place until told otherwise. On a different note, I am disappointed that this meeting this evening is virtual. And why is it virtual? Because members of this community chose to disregard all rules and regulations last evening. This cannot be allowed again. The board and community should not have to operate under chaos, disruption, and intimidation. Kraus is a public building, masks are worn, full stop. We need at future meetings a law enforcement presence large enough to deal with any disruptions. A warning should be given, then a request to vacate the premises, and finally, physical removal and arrest by law enforcement for both trespassing and disorderly conduct if necessary. This community should not placate nor tolerate any disruptive behavior as was seen last night. It is not fair to those of us who play by the rules and are capable of acting like adults, even when we don't get our way. My hope is that this is our last virtual meeting due to disruptions. Finally, I'd like to expand on placating the group last evening. Once the board elected to recess, the entire board needed to recess. I want to be clear, I appreciate the work all of you do, so I am not questioning anybody's motivations. But by remaining, an undeserved platform was given to a disruptive mob that needed to be ignored and sent on their way. They want to be heard, that is fine, that is their right, and they can do it during public comments. But they squandered that opportunity last evening via their temper tantrum. I will never ask this board to put forth a united front on all district issues, but I will ask the board to always be united in making it clear this behavior is not going to be tolerated in this district. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have Audrey Martin on?
Audrey Martin, if you're there, you're able to raise your hand. I changed the settings.
Okay, should we try Emma Balavaski? If you're on, raise your hand. All right, we'll go back to Karen Zat. Is Karen on, if somebody's?
Yeah, I'm on.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm speaking solely as a 204 parent tonight. A great human. Fight for the things that you care about, but do it in a way that will lead others to join you. Our public schools are the centerpiece of our community in Naperville. We choose our homes so we can assure ourselves participation in the best education our children can have. We celebrate the rich diversity of this community, and then, as parents, we are all in. With misty eyes, we take our kids and as kindergartners to their first school days, and with misty eyes, we watch them graduate in cap and gown 13 years later. We build community through years of homework assignments, science fairs, spring flings, PTA meetings, sports events, concerts, pickup line griping, and joyful last day of school celebrations. Along the way, we need teachers who inspire and principals who lead and staff who care for our kids with love and encouragement. We are grateful again and again for the things that go right for our kids and our award-winning school community. Perhaps our community has lost that sense of our shared endeavor in these two years that we have not, as parents, share the daily.
Did we lose Chris or Karen?
It seems like it cut off.
The children we go to school with as enemies and not neighbors. Stop yourself from thinking of buying into a false narrative that Naperville schools are us versus them. What are you doing today to help your community and serve others? What does your child need from you, from their classmates and neighbors and teachers and staff to thrive? I taught constitutional law for years, and I can assure you that kids in public school do not get to do whatever they want whenever they want. There are limits on their speech and dress and conduct. These limits are there to allow everyone to safely attend and participate in school, just like we regularly accept limitations in order to participate in democracy, like we don't let you drive as fast as you'd like down Route 59. Mitigation in a public health emergency is well within these kinds of limitations. No one likes masks, I get that. My kids don't like wearing masks, but they wear them to protect their high-risk sibling and every other at-risk kid and teacher in our schools. Their choice directly affects others, which is why our school district enacted a mitigation plan that protects all our kids and can change with case metrics. When we disagree, we have to be able to find ways to share that disagreement in respectful discourse, to model to our kids the great lesson of America that constitutional rights come hand in hand with responsibilities. If we value caring for our neighbors and seeing all of our children thrive, then we must find ways to express our discontent civilly. If you're like me, you have parent friends with whom you do not agree with on these issues. Tonight, do your kids a favor and reach out to someone you don't agree with and remind yourselves that the friendship and bonds of our community will not and are not defined by this disagreement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori, John Parker, please.
Okay, John Parker, you can be next.
There we go. Hold on one second, sorry about that.
Hold on one second, sorry about that.
John? Did we lose him?
I'll try him again.
Says he's connecting to audio. Okay, am I back?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, thank you. At the beginning of the school year, this board voted to start the year masks optional based on some ridiculous arbitrary metrics. Nothing since then has changed, and the courts backed you up. But instead of adhering to the judge's legal order, you've chosen to take the difficult and adversarial path. And why is that? You're putting the kids in the middle and using intimidation against them. A friend's middle school son was sent to the principal's office today, yesterday, for not wearing a mask. He was eventually sent back to the classroom, but was told if he didn't wear one, there would be consequences. When his dad spoke to the principal, the consequences were not outlined, but the principal again only said, "There would be consequences." Is that really the way we're treating our children, by intimidation? And unless each and every one of you wears a mask 100% outside of your home, you're a hypocrite. Can all of you say you haven't been to a restaurant, a gathering, a party? Is anyone going to a Super Bowl party this Sunday? If not, you're a hypocrite. Do you think about that while sitting in a restaurant full of people as our kids are forced to wear a mask sitting in the classroom? Dr. Tally, did you think about that at your conference in Springfield when you spoke in front of the other state superintendents? Did you think about it while 15 or 20 other superintendents were arm-in-arm taking pictures, all without masks? I saw your email response to this in an email today, and you said, "For exactly five minutes while I was on stage, more than 15 away from anyone, I did have my mask off." If I had seen everyone keeping their masks on while presenting, I would have kept my mask on while presenting at the conference. Really? You just followed the crowd? If you were truly following the mask mandate, it wouldn't matter what other presenters were doing. You decided yourself what rules to follow and which rules to break. And when you broke the rule, you didn't get sent home like our kids were sent home today. And it's funny, when called out, those pictures just suddenly disappeared from Twitter. And why can the kids take their masks off and eat lunch but are forced to wear them in the classroom? Is it safe to eat while eating but not in a classroom? Does that even make sense to anyone? This obviously is not about public health, but it's about control. It was more appropriate to have the meetings in the auditorium, since what's going on now is more about theater. Who's actually following the science? We know the flu is more dangerous for school-aged children than COVID is. We now know masks do not work, despite what other callers have said. We now know Illinois numbers are no better than any other states that are fully open. Why is Illinois one of only six states masking up kids? Has any other state gone backwards and started masking their kids because they were having issues without masks? The answer is no. And now other states today have announced they're removing all of their mask mandates.
Speaker's time is ended.
Thank you. Thank you very much, John. Okay, do we have Robert Chalman online? If you're on, raise your hand.
He's on, Lori.
Okay, Robert, you're up.
Hello.
Hello.
Okay, hang on. Thank you. All right, good evening to the board, thank you much. I have two boys currently in District 204, and I'm a 25-year resident of Naperville. I'm here to voice my disdain for the actions taken by this body in the face of clearing opportunities to make the right choice. When the downstate judge made the ruling Friday, the perfect out was presented for this board to make the obvious incorrect choice and move to mask optional since the obstacle of poorly justified mandated finally been removed. Instead, this body decided to continue with the masking requirement despite its clearly stated illegality. Any attempt to justify through claims of application to only those named is at best misguided, more likely a poorly conceived attempt at providing cover by your legal counsel. But then to follow that with enforcement through threatening and sequestering children, actions for which the school staff members involved can be potentially criminally liable is disturbing. I mean, honestly, it's like you guys own stock in a torch and pitchfork company at this point. But after two years, the data clearly shows that danger to the school-aged children from this virus is no higher. In fact, it's lower than any normal seasonal flu. This has been borne out time and again. I myself was completely on board, but the remote learning as well as masking earlier in the pandemic is, there were open questions and unclear data trends and that reasonably overstated a lot of the risks. In fact, I was one who remained compliant and made excuses for these policies far longer than was justifiable. But the data shows no transmission impact from masking or other dividers. Anyone who claims there is, claims to outdated assumptions and old information, it's basically dogmatic at this point. Even the CDC now states these don't help. There's no justification for continuing this requirement from a safety standpoint. None. You can't recognize that. We have a much bigger issue like thing. The definite harm of continued youth masking far outweighs any minor risk of transmission. That risk is even lower now that the virus has grown less severe. Recent high-transmission variants and vaccinations have meant large-scale immunities. The last variant demonstrated this effect. That's why a lot of the states are dropping their requirements as well. I don't want to believe the reason's something other than safety, since if that were the case, that'd be indefensible. Others have already made those accusations around S R funds and the like. The truth would bear itself out whenever. However, safety is no longer a justifiable reason to the point where everyone's left asking, "Why is this happening?" Again, so those that wish to continue can feel free to wear masks. They can double up on them if it gives you comfort, makes you feel better, lowers anxiety. That's your choice. However, to force all children to continue with the masking, lacking a real explanation, leaves people to question the reason. But the cost of litigation is going to far outweigh any other impacts at this point. This must end regardless of the reason. The District 204 parental consensus is clear. You can only threaten so many third graders with consequences before that consensus starts to approach 100%. These are children, they're students we're talking about. You are the school board. Any decision other than making masks optional is nothing short of a dereliction of duty. So stop dividing our community. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Donahue? Audrey is available.
Okay, Audrey Martin, you're up next. Thank...
Audrey, are you there?
She on?
She is. She should be able to speak. Audrey? Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
We'll go to Emily now. Emily?
Is it Emma?
Or Emma, yeah.
Basky.
Hello. My name is Emma Buliyavsky, and I'm in 4th grade at Kendall Elementary School. I have been patiently wearing masks for nearly two years now. After school, I would come back home with a headache, and during school, I would have a lot of trouble breathing. In music, I happily signed up for chorus. The following day, I found out the chorus, I needed to wear two masks. So when I came to the chorus wearing two masks, I could barely breathe and singing was even more difficult. That day after school, I told my mom that I couldn't do chorus because of the masks. Unfortunately, I ended up quitting it. I also know the states that border us have no mask mandates, and they are doing better than us. So why do you have to punish us and make us wear masks when the judge said you do not have to? It might not be a problem for you, as you have an office where you can close the door and take off your mask. We can't do that at school, so maybe you should try wearing a mask for about seven hours straight, every day, and see how it is. Also, in PE class, we run and do physical activities, and without a mask, I would be panting, and you don't know how hard it is to do physical activities wearing a mask. In the court, the judge ruled that all the mask mandates are not legal. I was so excited when I heard this news, but you disappointed me and the other kids with your decision to continue with your mask required at schools. I do not have a choice. I want to have a choice. Everybody can decide for themselves. If you want to wear a mask, go ahead. But if I don't, I want to have an option to do that. Let me breathe freely. Last, every single grade I went to, the teachers taught us about Martin Luther King Jr., Rosa Parks, and other civil rights activists, and what they have accomplished. The teachers always told us to stand up for what's right and for our rights. But in reality, you don't like it when we try to do that, and you just make us stop. My brother and I came without a mask on Monday to school, but we were not allowed to go into the classroom unless we wore a mask. We were denied education that day. You want us to be role models, but you yourself are setting a bad example by not following the law. Please do the right thing, and please give us a choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Emma. Okay, do we have Jennifer Davis?
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
Hi, I too was one of the many parents who attended the 204 board meeting last night at the Kraus Education Center. It was the first board meeting that I had attended in person, and I was also disappointed by the fact that only two of the board members remained in the room during the meeting to hear public comment because some in attendance did not put on a mask. I want to again thank the two board members who stayed and listened to the parents and children at the podium, even those who refused to mask, while the other members voted to recess twice and then adjourn and leave the room. I have three children in District 204 elementary schools. It is time to let individuals decide what is best for their families. That's what this is really about for many of us parents speaking tonight. The right to choose, and this is why we have such passion on masking and other issues. Right now, we as parents cannot choose whether our child must wear a mask, even when there now is a downstate judge ruling against mask mandates. And to get to that point, it took a group of many parents across nearly 170 school districts to band together to fight against the lack of due process and file suit against the districts. In regards to the litigation in Sangamon County, which listed District 204 as a defendant, Superintendent Tally stated in an email on Sunday to parents that there was, and I quote, "Uncertainty and significant confusion reflected in recent reports regarding the temporary restraining order," and that the legal effect of a temporary restraining order is, as I quote, "Uncertain over the next couple of weeks because it will be appealed." In light of such uncertainty, why not err on the side of restoring and preserving freedom of choice to parents, as so many other Illinois districts have, rather than continuing to exert control over the children regarding mandates and mask requirements? Over 200 Illinois school districts have now moved to a mask optional or mask recommended stance, including many nearby districts such as Lombard 44, Arlington Heights 25 and 214, Plainfield, Elmhurst 205, Barrington 220, Lake Forest, and the list goes on. Why not 204? Why aren't we giving children back a sense of their normalcy? Let's get back to our basic right to freedom to choose what's best for our own children and families. That's what this is about, the freedom to choose. This is the core and why I am speaking out. Wear one mask if that's your choice, or don't if that's your choice. Either is correct and should be respected. The control for our children belongs to us as parents, and each family will decide what's best for them, as it should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have Joseph Hildenberg?
We have a hand raised. It may be Joseph, if you could just ask that, Lori.
Joseph, raise your hand. If you're Joseph Hildenberg? Are you Joseph Hildenberg?
This is Audrey Martin.
We are waiting for Audrey. She could speak.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Audrey.
How, am I good to speak?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I want to start off by saying I think we're all in agreement that we want to be done with masks. After two years, we are burnt out of everything. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I want to start off by saying I think we're all in agreement that we want to be done with masks. After two years, this is not working.
You're getting feedback, and she needs to start the timer over or whatever, so she has enough time.
Okay, I will.
Okay, I'll try this again, sorry. I think we're all in agreement that we want to be done with masks. After over two years, we are all burnt out with everything pandemic-related. However, I and many others know that with the high numbers in our area, it's not quite time yet. We may not be the loudest voices, but we're many and strong. I want to thank the board for following guidance by IDPH and upholding masking requirements for the time being. Hopefully, transmission will continue to decline, and we can return to normal in the upcoming months. To those advocating for parental choice, I'm right there with you. Homeschooling and private schooling are always options for those who wish to have more control over the rules their children need to follow and the content of their education. However, public schools need to operate in the best interest of the public, not just those who speak the loudest. Responsible citizens think of others, and as a community, we need to protect not only our children, but our teachers and staff and their families as well. When my seven-year-olds wear their masks, they wear them not to protect themselves, but to protect others from germs they might have. Masks aren't perfect, but they're better than nothing, and I think we can all agree we don't want to have to return to remote learning. I want to truly thank not only the board, but all of 204 staff who work hard every day for our kids. I'm sorry that so many members of our school community have been rude, disrespectful, and defiant. You are doing your jobs with the best interest of our children and our community in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have Joseph Hildenberg on?
Ms. Donahue, I'm not seeing a hand for him, so we can go to the next, the last speaker.
Chad Martenson. If you're on, raise your hand.
See his head raised.
Do you see him?
Yes, he's able to speak.
Chad, are you there?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Tally and board members, for the opportunity to speak tonight. I will keep it short and sweet. I have three children, a 2020 graduate, a Matia Valley High School who attended school in the district from kindergarten through 12th grade, a senior at Matia Valley High School, and a 4th grader that would normally attend Brookdale Elementary. I say "normally" because we love Brookdale and would love for her to attend there. But with the pandemic, we are uncertain that she would receive an unencumbered public education. She is now attending private school, where they have successfully navigated the pandemic and remained at school for in-person learning throughout. Since the judge's ruling on February 4th, her school has gone mask optional for all students and staff. Our hope is that she can return to 204 once the district finds its way. Unfortunately, my senior is not so lucky and has had to remain at Matia, where she has decided to take a stand against the unlawful requirement that she wear a mask in exchange for her education. She is a high-achieving student with a GPA in excess of 4.0, but it does not come easy, and she has to work hard for it. She is currently taking calculus and needs to be in class, or she will quickly fall behind. Today, she was escorted out of the building for exercising her lawful right to attend school unencumbered by a mask. You have chosen to break the law and deny her education because she simply wants to exercise her legal right. I implore you, please don't break the law and willfully go against the judge's order. Please don't force my daughter to make the difficult decision where she is forced to exchange her principles for her education. Please, please allow her to attend class and learn and thrive. If her grades suffer because you have chosen to unlawfully exclude her from school, we will be forced into litigation. This isn't a path we want. I ask you, please do not make us go down this path. We just want her to receive her public education without being bullied or manipulated. Thank you.
Thank you. So I guess the only speaker we were missing is Joseph Hildenberg.
Looks like we have a hand raised, Ms. Donahue.
Okay.
I just allowed to talk.
Is this Joseph Hildenberg?
Hello?
Hi, is this Joseph?
Yes, it is.
Okay, yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, yes, um, so I'm not going to speak, uh, uh, you, uh, belabor the points that have already been made. I'm not going to repeat a lot about evidence or studies. Um, I think that the board has access to IDPH's material, ISBE material, and CDC material. Um, so there's no, I, I, I will just state our current situation is, uh, um, I have the father of an immunocompromised son. Um, he had a heart transplant, and, um, he's had three COVID vaccines, uh, shots, and uh, we actually just got his antibody study, uh, back today, and he has zero protection. Um, and so, uh, from, from, uh, COVID. So, uh, we are unfortunately dependent upon, um, the, um, the children around him to be able to protect him, and many of his friends, or most of his friends, I think, understand that we've not had a problem with, uh, um, the children around him, around him, understanding, um, the risk he's at, um, and, uh,
He got muted. Yeah, he got muted all of a sudden.
Joseph? Is he still on?
Can you unmute him, Jean?
Yeah, he, he is unmuted. I'll try it again.
Hello?
Hi, Joseph, yeah, you got it, you got it.
Okay, yes, so my point is that, um, we're unfortunately reliant upon, um, the, um, uh, the, the goodwill of others to protect him, and I wish it weren't the case, but he spent the last month home because of the increased spread from Omicron. He, uh, um, a- and, and by, prior hospital, they required him to stay home. We have a letter that said that he had to stay home, and so yesterday was his first day back, and we, um, were trepidatious about his return because of the mask mandate ruling, and we were only relieved by the fact that, um, the board, uh, or Dr. Tally or whomever um, made that determination to require, continue to require masks. Um, and that's, that's our personal story. I understand that that doesn't resonate with everybody. I just wanted to, um, uh, mention that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That is the end of public comment. So we now move to our consent agenda and superintendent report. We will start with the superintendent report.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue, members of the board and the Indian Prairie community. Uh, I want to talk about a few things tonight. One, I want to start with how our decisions are made about school closures when there's a snow event. Though I did share some information in an email last week, I feel it's important to share more information as I continue to get some questions about what happened last week, and I think the more you know about the process, the better. Many of the superintendents in the area, we helped, we held a conference call when we are planning for a snow event. In the case of last week, we held such a call on Tuesday at noon and then again at five. In both cases, there were some districts that were planning to do an e-learning day and some who were still undecided. At that time, I was undecided since snow was not present in our area. Our district director facility stays abreast of the weather forecast and works with our custodial team and our contractor whom we've hired who removes our snow so that they're prepared for the event. On the day of the snow, our team is out starting around three AM. I also am out starting around four to see for myself the conditions of the schools and the roads. Last week, I was at Matia, Brooks, Granger, and La Bonzi Valley, La Bonzi, uh, all by four forty-five. And at that time, I took a conference call with the three superintendents of Lyle, two hundred, and two oh three. At that time, we decided we could open our schools. And as some people have questioned, they, I want to know why we have to decide that out. Our buses start picking up students around six ten in the morning. We have bus drivers who do not live in the area. They have to have enough time to get to the bus lots and start their pickups. We have athletic practice that starts early. I was at Nikla Valley around five fifteen and saw our students arriving for swim practice that morning. We also have many staff members that travel far, and they must know sooner than later if we're opening. Though we could see that the rate of snow was increasing later that morning around seven AM, we did not make a change. Some might say, why not? Once we've made a decision one way or the other, changing that decision creates other issues. For parents if, who have left for work knowing we are going to be open, they now have to return home knowing that their children may be staying there. Buses then have to pick up the children who are already dropped off and taken back home. In my prior experiences when I had seen school districts make that change, that decision creates more problems than solves them. Had we seen the snow coming down at four forty-five similar to what it was at seven, I am certain the decision would have been different. Yes, we do know that the weather was predicted, but I think all of us have been, have seen predictions happen, and then the amount of snow was less than expected. January one, for example, we were predicted to have eight inches of snow and received only three and a half. I understand e-learning was an option for us. It remains an option. However, e-learning is asynchronous. At the same, at the time I made the decision, I felt that having the students directly connected to teachers would be better. I do thank everyone for last week, from the TAs, teachers, bus drivers, crossing guards, front office workers, nurses, parents, and students, and I'm sure I didn't name everyone. However, for all, I am very thankful. I know as a superintendent that whatever decision I make, some will like it and some will not, and that was true about last week. I received many emails and phone calls from parents and students saying the decision was wrong. I also received emails from people saying it was the right decision. There is never a win-win situation when a superintendent makes a decision about snow. Safety of our students and our staff and the community are all paramount in our considerations of making this decision. Though I know some may not think so, we always consider the safety issues, and that's what all three of the other superintendents and I were talking about when we made the decision. Personally, I look at each decision made and reflect and determine what I can do better in the process. Last week was no exception. It's about continuous improvement. The second item I want to bring up is our decision for make, for masks required in our schools in light of the temporary restraining order or the TRO. As mentioned in the letter I sent on Sunday, the TRO was a product of a lawsuit brought forward by parents across the state impacting more than a hundred seventy school districts in the state of Illinois. The judge provided a decision earlier on Friday saying that the case was not a class action. That meant in the opinion of many legal teams that the TRO only impacts the children of the parents named in the case. Additionally, back in July, the Board of Education approved our mitigation strategies, which you can find on their website. Based upon what was approved by the Board of Ed at the time, we are still mask required. We currently have approximately three hundred forty-one cases per hundred thousand, and our positivity rate is hovering around five point five percent. That number has been steadily dropping over the past week, and that is great news. Based upon our legal recommendations and talking to our firm that represents us and what was approved by the Board of Ed in July, we are still required masking for all families except those who are maimed in the lawsuit. Considering the TRO pending stay and pending appeal, we must be prepared for any myriad of responses from the courts. Until then, we need to stay the course based upon what was approved. I will also say that we are examining ways to return to normal and the off-ramp from the mask required. As people have spoken tonight, I would agree, we do want to move away from that eventually. The local plan, though, with the requirement for cases per hundred thousand will make it difficult to move down to moderate or lower levels. Therefore, we have to examine how to move beyond that. And we're having conversations now. We continue to have conversations with the Health Department. I have another call about that on Friday. Over the weekend, the board and I received many emails, some showing displeasure with the decision and some showing support. As with any major decision, there will always be a lot of opinions as we continue to navigate what our community wants. On a totally different note, I want to praise the staff of Matia, Longwood, and Granger for their work Friday in responding to an issue in the community that caused some of our children to have a delay in going home. Due to police issue in the community, approximately a hundred five students at those schools could not be picked up immediately and had to be reunited with their parents at Granger. All three schools kept our children not only safe but comfortable throughout the time period. I praise our transportation team for their ability to route buses and have the students picked up at Matia and Longwood and taken to Granger. All children were eventually picked up by their parents by six PM. I also applaud our central office team in supporting the schools throughout the events. Finally, I, I, I'm very happy about the McAvil Police Department and working with us throughout the event and keeping us informed of what was happening. It was a team effort. And before I turn my, uh, my comments back to the board, I would like the Board of Ed to approve two appointments that are before you tonight. First, I am recommending that the Board of Ed approve Ms. Jeanne Dina as the new Assistant Director of Community Relations in the Office of Communications. Ms. Dina is currently my executive assistant and serves the Board of Ed, and she has done an exemplary job over the last year and a half. She used to serve in the McKinney Vento, as the McKinney Vento Liaison in the Office of Teaching and Learning. She has, it has been my privilege to work with her since starting as superintendent. She has been a godsend, and I'm very happy she is not leaving the district but taking on a new challenge. She is replacing a position that was vacated in December. And this will be under consent, I know, but I am also recommending Ron Willpee for the position of Safety, Security, and Emergency Preparedness Coordinator. Ron has spent the past twenty years with the Lyle Police Department, serving as the Chief of Police since two twenty, two thousand nineteen. And during the interview process, uh, Ron demonstrated a commitment to collaboration, building relationships, and a community-oriented approach to school safety. The safety and security of our students is our number one priority, and Ron will be a great asset in the district in this area. He is replacing Mike Anders, who recently retired. And Ms. Donahue, I will turn it back to you.
Thank you. So I need a motion to approve Jean, Jeanne Dina as Assistant Director of Community Relations as presented.
This is Susan Demming. I make a motion approving Gina, Jeanne Dina um, for the Assistant Director of Community Relations as presented.
Is there a second?
Natasha Grover, second.
Any discussion?
I just want to say I'm, I'm so pleased for her and very happy. We are going to miss her being as directly involved with us, but look forward to seeing her shine and thrive in her new role.
Thank you.
Yes. Jeanne, will you call the role?
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Mr. Carubis.
Yes.
Ms. Fastic.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
And Mr. Rising.
Yes, and good luck, Jeanne.
Thank you.
The motion passes, and we are thrilled to welcome you in your new role, but as Ms. Demming said, we will miss you as our support. So, thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, next we move to our consent agenda items. I need a motion for the approval of consent agenda items D through Q.
This is Natasha Grover. I move that the board approve consent agenda items D through Q.
I second.
Any discussion? Jeanne, will you call the role?
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Mr. Carubis.
Yes.
Ms. Fastic.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes. The motion passes. I need a motion to approve to table the draft update of Board Policy six colon one thirty-five accelerated placement program.
Mark Rising, I'll make a motion that the Board of Education approve to table the draft update for Board Policy six colon one three five accelerated placement program as presented.
Is there a second?
I second. Something, Jane?
Any discussion?
Ms. Donahue, if I may, I just want to say we're, we're tabling this because um, there are many school districts that are having an issue with this policy as written. We are working with the legislature on it, and so for right now, we would like to hold off on it. Um, it doesn't go into effect anyway until the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, so there is no need to approve it immediately.
Jeanne, will you call the role?
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Mr. Carubis.
Yes.
Ms. Fastic.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
The motion passes. I need a motion in a second to approve the Gifts and Donations Report, uh, first semester twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year as presented.
This is Allison Fastic. I move that the Board of Education approve the Gifts and Donations Report for Semester twenty twenty-one, twenty-two as presented.
Is there a second?
Natasha Grover, second.
Any discussion? Jeanne, will you please, oh, go ahead.
No, I was just, I was just gonna, I was kind of waiting for you to say something, Lori. Um, I, you know, I, I just think it needs to be said in this area that, um, you know, we've got a, an extremely amazing community, um, that helps their schools and helps the district, uh, and, and, you know, affords us and provides us the opportunity to do many programs, um, not only within the district but in individual schools, and I just wanted to make sure that we recognized our parents and our community, um, and our donors who, um, are contributing to their schools in the district.
Yes, well said. We are extremely grateful for the generous contributions of many people and organizations. And in fact, we will hear from I P E F later in the program, so thank you. So, um, where were we? Jeanne, will you please call the role?
Ms. Fastic.
Yes.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Mr. Carubis.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue. Ms. Donahue.
Yes, the motion passes, and thank you again to everyone. We will now have a presentation from Alicia Johnson on the Indian Prairie Education Foundation that I just mentioned.
Point of order. I think we need to do the hearing officer.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I'm like looking at the paper. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Carubis. All right, we need an approval of a hearing officer for a suspension appeal.
Mark Rising.
So we need a motion and a second.
Yeah, Mark Rising, I make an approval of the hearing officer for a suspension appeal as presented.
Is there a second?
This is Allison Fastic, I second.
Is there any discussion?
This, Donahue, just to let you know, we have a request, a couple of requests of appeals for suspension. And hence the reason we need to have the Board appoint the, uh, hearing officer.
And this is just, Dr. Tally, just standard procedure that we have to do in public, correct?
That is correct.
Thanks.
Okay, Jeanie, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Fastic.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Deming.
Aye.
Mr. Carubis.
Yes.
Motion passes. I think, Jeanie, this is the last time I will have to ask you to call the roll, so thank you very much for your service and support of the Board.
Oh, thank you so much.
Okay, now we will have a presentation from Alicia Johnson from the Indian Prairie Education Foundation.
Hello, everyone. I just wanted to make sure everyone can hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, great, thank you so much. Um, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Alicia Johnson, the Executive Director of the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation. And I'm happy to be here tonight. I just want to say thank you to all of the Board of Education members, as well as Dr. Tally. For the opportunity to be here, um, and to share a little bit about the foundation. Uh, the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation has been in existence since nineteen eighty-eight. And for the last thirty-plus years, we have partnered closely with District two oh four. Uh, to support our students and to enhance their educational experience. We do that in a variety of ways, um, and just some examples of the programs that, um, we are able to provide. And to help fund and support, um, our, our Back on Track Program, which is social and emotional. Support for our middle and high school at-risk, um, students. Um, you heard mentioned earlier tonight, our robotics program. We were just at the robotics program, uh, tournament this last weekend for our middle school students. And I agree, amazing talent, so we, uh, feel very fortunate to be able to be involved in that. And support our robotics, um, participants from the elementary age level through, um, high school. And then we are very proud to help support our families in the district that are in need, our families in need through our Kid Essentials Program. Um, there's other programs, but one also that I want to mention, as you know, the foundation really started. As a support for the district's fine arts program, and we are proud to continue that support throughout the district. Um, through funding of our holiday, uh, concerts at the high schools. Um, our support the artist program, artists and residents. And we are very happy this year, um, to be able to bring back the Fine Arts Festival. So that will be absolutely fantastic. Other areas the foundation supports is through support for our, um, teachers and our wonderful staff. Uh, through our teacher grants program, as well as through our A-plus award program. Um, recognizing those staff members that go above and beyond. So we are very happy and thrilled to be able to provide that support. Um, but we're only able to, to provide that support, um, through the generosity. Um, of our community members, through our parents, um, who are so wonderful to donate throughout the year. Um, especially during student registration time, um, as well as fundraisers. Um, and this evening, I'm excited to, uh, share a little bit of information about a couple of our fundraisers that we have coming up. So next slide, please. So I'm happy to share with you, excited to share that registration for Team I P E F is open. You probably see the sprite yellow shirt I have on, as well as some of our Board of, Board of Education members have on tonight. So thank you for that, for wearing your yellows. Um, we are thrilled that to be in our ninth year, Team I P E F. Is a group of wonderful team members from around our district. Community members, students, teachers, staff members, alumni, all coming together. Working together, one purpose, raising funds for our school, for our students. And, uh, participating as charity partners in the Naperville Healthy Driven Five K. And Half Marathon in October. Um, you can see the registration link at the bottom of this slide, and we are very excited that registration is now open. Next slide, please. This is our ninth year to participate in the race, and we couldn't be happier. And, uh, more thankful for over two thousand team members that have participated in Team I P F. Since the inception back in two thousand and fourteen. Each team member is, um, pledges to raise funds for, um, their school of choice. Um, and over that last eight years, the hard work has paid off. Over a million dollars has been raised. By our team members for our district schools. Everything that is raised, fifty percent goes right back to the school, and fifty percent goes to the donate, or to the foundation to support. Uh, the variety of programs throughout the dis, the district. So we encourage you to get involved this year, um, join us, join us for the race. Have never done a race before, not really participating in any sort of, um, exercise programs, that's okay. We are there for you, uh, we encourage you to participate in the Five K. It's something that everyone can do. We are providing a trainer this year who will create and provide a training program for you. It's also a wonderful way for your family to do something together, work together for a common cause. Um, and focus on, uh, health and wellness. Our race day is October the sixteenth this year. And, um, we are excited about, um, uh, our team members getting back together. And we appreciate all of the Board of Education members participating for the last few years, as well as Dr. Tally last year. So go to our website, I P E F two oh four dot org. Uh, click on Team I P E F, and you will be able to find out more information and, uh, register right there. Next slide, please. Also want to share with you this evening information about a new fundraiser. That the, uh, foundation is launching, Inspire twenty-two. We're so excited about this event, which will take place on March eleventh. Um, at a, a really unique and fun event space, Loft Twenty-eight West. So we are, we are thrilled about this event, which will have, um, food and beverage. Uh, we'll have silent auction opportunities, we have a wine wall, a paddle race. But what I'd like to share is so special about this evening, we have very talented students in our district. Talented musicians, talented vocalists, talented artists. So throughout the evening, many of these students will be performing, um, and share their talents with us. We also will have an art gallery within the event space. And we'll be showcasing many pieces of artwork from our students, uh, elementary through high school. Uh, those pieces of art will be on auction, available for bidding through our online auction. Um, so we are inviting everyone to come. There is ticket and sponsorship information through the link at the bottom. Um, of this slide, so a lot of different ways to, uh, support and get involved. And we welcome you, um, to get involved with, with both. Any questions? Feel free to reach out to me directly, so, uh, thank you again for the opportunity. Any questions?
No, but I'll say that on the race, you don't have to be even a runner, or even if you don't want to be a runner, many of us walk the race. And it's a great exercise and great companionship with everyone, and you're helping out the school district and all our schools. So and then on Inspire, uh, we need everyone to, um, sign up for it. It's going to be a wonderful event showcasing our students. And again, um, building, um, resources in our foundation to bring you all those wonderful programs. That Alicia spoke about, um, if you like those programs, and there's many others that I P E F, uh, contributes to. We need your help and, um, generous participation in, um, this program. And I hope to see all of you at that event that evening, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next we have the transportation, uh, information for grandfathering students affected by the boundary changes. And this will be presented by Ron Johnson, our Director of Support Services.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Uh, just want to make sure you can hear me, give me a thumbs up. Okay. Uh, thank you for having me out tonight to discuss some of the impacted areas for transportation. For the grandfather students that are eligible, uh, and what those boundaries look like. Uh, on January tenth, two thousand twenty-two, the Board of Education approved these changes and also approved a grandfathering plan. That incorporated many of the students that are, that are part of the, uh, boundary changes. When we are evaluating the grandfather students that are affected, you would think you're looking at. Uh, transportation policy four, semicolon, one one zero, but in reality, we're looking at seven, semicolon, three zero. Which talks about, um, students that are not attending their assigned, uh, schools within their residence. We're talking about attendance area exceptions, and within that policy, it basically talks about. If we can accommodate a student for in a, a attendance area adjustment or an exception. They forfeit, uh, transportation, that means they'll provide it for themselves. But during that meeting on January tenth, we were asked, can you look at transportation to see what is feasible? So when we took a, took a look at that, we had elementary students that were available, they're rising fifth graders, so current fourth graders. At the middle school level, rising seventh and eighth graders, which were, which are current sixth and seventh graders. And at the high school, rising tenth, eleventh, and twelfth, where they're, which are current ninth, tenth, and eleventh graders. Um, these are, and I think we, we, we all agree that these are some pretty generous, uh, grandfathering. Um, the number of students and, and how we've allowed it, a little bit different than we've allowed it in the past. Um, which created a nice little task for me, so thank you. I appreciate that. And during the meeting on January tenth, uh, what, what we did is we did talk a little bit about transportation. Uh, Dr. Tally and Matt Shipley. Gave the community an update and said, you know, we can't guarantee transportation at this time, but we're going to make every effort to provide. Uh, some of the conversations that I've had, uh, with parents, Clayton, you can go to the next slide. Some of the parents, the conversation that I've had with parents is, there would be no reason why we wouldn't be able to do it. Unless it strapped the operation so tight that we just don't have the drivers to do it, which affects service to students that are eligible for transportation service. In compliance with state law and board policy for semicolon, one one zero. Part of that is, is the availability of drivers. Uh, at the beginning of the year, we were roughly thirty to thirty-five drivers short, uh, from what we needed to run. And we're consolidating routes every day. Uh, as of yesterday, when we met the first student, that number is at thirty-six. So even though we have a pipeline of about ten to twelve drivers, we're also seeing about ten to twelve drivers either going out due to COVID. Uh, other illnesses, other, uh, legal absences, or going to other employment, which requires a C D L. Uh, during some of these exit interviews, they're not leaving our district to drive a school bus to go to another district to drive a school bus. But because they possess a C D L, there's other full-time opportunities that include some benefits and some long-term pension plans for them, so. Uh, the good thing is, is we're not le, losing them to other districts. The bad thing is, is there's such a demand for a C D L driver, there's an opportunity for them. Uh, to take them out of the, the school bus realm. We also know that the unknown number of students that are going to let grandfather options. Um, where we weren't sure, because w- we really didn't understand the areas. That were impacted by the grandfather option and who would be eligible. We, we knew, you know, rising fifth graders, rising seventh and eighth, we, we knew that. But we really didn't dive into where those areas were at and how they would look for transportation eligibility. If we were able to grant them transportation. Part of the implementation that was discussed on January tenth was that we really need to stick to the number of drivers that we're using today. Because there's, there's really no guarantee that after we build the route scheme for next school year with the new boundaries. What that demand is going to be. What we're hoping is, is if we need two hundred and sixty drivers today. Next year with the new boundaries, we also need two hundred and sixty drivers. W- we hope it doesn't grow. Part of that evaluation is, there may be, um, some areas that we need to evaluate for an Illinois Department of Transportation serious safety hazard. And so far, we've evaluated or identified four areas for evaluation that we'll need to conduct, conduct the study on. And submit findings to the Illinois Department of Transportation for them to send out a pedestrian safety engineer. So unfortunately, there's, there's no, yes, this is a quick answer, we can do it or no. It, it took a, a, a serious evaluation. And in many budget presentations, whether it was Jay String or Matt Shipley, we always talk about being very lean. Uh, I, I'm a department with transportation of two, and unfortunately, we still have a school year that's running. We still have a lot of changes within our current route scheme. We're establishing our route scheme for, uh, uh, summer E S Y and some summer programming. So there's a lot of moving parts that are still needing to continue. We don't just get to hit the pause button and look at this. Um, and due to that, my wife calls me a work widow. Uh, she says that I'm now married to Indian Prairie two oh four. Because that's where I spend most of my time from about four A M. to midnight. Um, but, but that's, that's what it takes to make sure that we're supportive and our community is supported the best that we're able to do that. Um, we're looking at adding grandfathered students if we're able to provide transportation to existing routes. Or if we're able to add a, a tier. If, if, if anybody doesn't know what that means, we run a three-tier route system where one driver will run, uh, high school, then they'll go to a middle school. And then they'll go do a elementary route, but due to some of our parents and the number of, uh, elementary routes that are needed. We run about a hundred twenty-three regu, regular education routes, a hundred twenty-three reg, regular education drivers. Uh, for middle school, and then we, we dropped to about ninety-eight for elementary. What that means is there's some capacity. To add a tier to a, a driver that only has a high school or a middle school. For an elementary, if we needed to not add a driver, but we would have some opportunity to add some more work to an existing driver. Or if there's capacity on existing routes, if a, a school like, uh, Brooks, who currently has ten regular education routes. That run them, uh, run to that school, there may be some capacity where we can, uh, route a driver into an area and pick up some students. That might be eligible for transportation. Uh, initially, we said, you know, this is, this is a big undertaking. We, we can notify families by spring break. Um, but as we, as we really started diving into the work and grinding it out, spending a lot of time on it. I want to, I went to Dr. Tally in the Board of Education, and I said, well, we might be able to give them an update prior to the final selection of this Friday, uh, the eleventh. That would give some information, whether it's information they would like to hear or information that, uh, they may not like to hear. At least it's information that's going to help them make a decision. Okay. Uh, next slide. So what I tried to do is, is simplify. Everything into some color coatings for us. Um, and on the color coatings on some of the pre, uh, uh, following slides, we're going to come up, and it's going to be, if you see a green. That means transportation can be supported with no impact, meaning we have existing capacity, or we can add a route tier, uh, to an existing driver. Nothing's going to be impacted. If you see a yellow color coating, what that means is we can support it, it's going to have some minimal impact. And what the minimal impact means is there might be some areas or some students on the bus a little bit longer than they're typically seen. However, those areas are, that we've identified are areas that right now have longer route times. An example would be, there's an area down by, uh, off of fifty-nine that goes to Kendall, uh, Station fifty-nine. Uh, that already has almost a half hour bus ride to go to Kendall. Because we'd be putting on a, on an existing Kendall route, that means it could be between thirty and forty-five minutes for those students that live in that area. That decide to grandfather, if we're able to support them going to Kendall. So that's just an example. It just means a, that we can support it on an existing route. Doesn't impact an additional driver that we may not be able to support. However, it could result in. However, it could result in some longer route times. If there's orange, this means that there's it's it's highly dense, it's highly dense with students, meaning we don't have enough capacity. And we don't have enough drivers to add within our routes here. Routes aren't available, the pairings may not work due to how large our district are. So we wouldn't be able to get kids to school on time. What this means is we we can't, we're not going to say no just yet. But it means we also can't say yes just yet. What that means is that we need to understand who's really going to select grandfathering as their option. Okay. If it's red, as of tonight, it just can't be supported. If everybody within that area selected grandfather. We would not be able to support it. It would just take too many drivers, which the volume of drivers just wouldn't 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 work. We wouldn't be able to. Even if we said we're, well, we're going to gain a couple of drivers in this area. Two would just not be enough. So that it would just would not support this this uh this is part of the evaluation. That doesn't mean after Friday, once we receive the data for the grandfather elections, we're not going to continue to evaluate. You know, I would recommend potentially, once I get that information, we come back and give an update of what we're able to support um after tonight. The number of areas that we did have to evaluate was uh forty-eight. There was forty-eight separate areas that we had to really dive in, see that the students, see the number of students that were in those areas. Uh, compare the old boundaries with the new boundaries, whether they would be transportation eligible. And their current boundary going to their current school. And if we're able to even support it with our within our routing scheme. Uh, next slide. So this slide, you've already seen as part of the presentation, what this is, is you have the elementary levels. How many students reside in the boundaries? And how many are impacted by the boundary change? So this slide, you've seen already. But just wanted to to reiterate that what we looked at is eleven hundred and fifty-four students, and if you go to the next slide. Out of those eleven hundred and fifty fifty or so students, two hundred and twenty-four of them would be. Provided transportation, okay? And for the elementary level, we had to evaluate twenty-nine separate areas. The, I guess the good thing is is there was only thirteen out of the twenty-one elementary buildings that actually had students that were impacted. So the when we went by school building, when we evaluated the new boundary over and overlaid the new uh old boundary. It wasn't all twenty-one, it was just thirteen. So if you remember the color coatings that I reviewed over here. If you look at the students that currently reside in the Brookdale, that would now go to Longwood. That's green. And what that means is is we can, we can support grand, we can support transporting the students that would elect grandfathering in that area. Okay, now there are three areas that are orange. But as I indicated before, at the elementary level, we can add a tier to an existing drivers, so give them more work. Without adding a driver need. However, those numbers are a little bit high, so some of the stu-, some of the schools. May see more routes than what they have this year. One, maybe two more, depending on the capacity we have on the routes, once we build next year's route scheme and finish. Drawing in those boundaries into our G I S system for routing. Okay. The Longwood area that um services Young, so the current students that currently live in Longwood area uh would currently attend Longwood. Those ten students that would now attend Young. Uh, Bayou Path was under development and those developers had added uh some some walk paths that connect. That entire area now to Longwood. So even if the boundary changes. Would not have taken effect, those students would become walkers next year because they're under one point five miles and they don't have to walk through any type of development. So they were on a temporary hazard. So those two students can attend, but they're walkers. They they would, they'd be walker eligible. They would receive transportation. So that's a decision that those families would have to make in absence of transportation because they wouldn't be eligible anyway. The Maywatz area, we currently have seven ru-, uh, seven routes that go to Maywatz. That that area we, the thirty area for that that would be in the the new Owen area, we have to look at that. Um, we would have to potentially add another route tier to that driver. Um, but again, I I believe we can support it and so does uh the other member of my team. Uh, Step currently has eight routes. Um, we could probably squeeze them on the existing eight routes. If 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 apples to apples came, we have eight routes today, we have eight routes next year. Um, however, if not, we do have the capacity to add another route tier. Uh, for Young, they have seven routes. Again, we do have the capacity, most likely going to uh need another route added to a tier. Not a, an additional driver, okay? So if we move on to middle school, go ahead and go to the next slide. So again, you've seen this slide before as part of the presentation and and handouts that we had back on January tenth. Eleven hundred and ninety-three students out of the middle schools uh uh were impacted by the boundary changes. But again, not all of them are eligible for transportation. Uh, if you go to the next slide, Clayton. All seven middle schools had to be evaluated. Uh, unlike the elementary buildings, the boundary changes did impact all seven middle schools. Um, we had to evaluate fifteen separate areas individually. And there were some, there's, you're going to see a lot of red on this due to the high population density in the areas. Um, there's a lot of students that would be eligible for uh for grandfathering. Um, however, because of the, like I said, we only have a hundred twenty-three drivers that run a high school or a middle school available. If we were to add, provide transportation for all grandfather students, we would need an additional twelve drivers, which is just not possible, unfortunately. I mean, we may be able to get a few out of the uh out of the pipeline going into the next school year, but twelve is almost impossible at this time. So if we go, if we go each one, Crown has the biggest impact because of the area um down by Ashbury Park, which has two hundred and five students that would be. Uh, grandfather eligible. Uh, they can make a decision to go to Gregory. Um, or they can make a decision to go at Crown, but as of tonight, depending on. Um, their grandfather choice election by Friday, we would not be able to support this area providing transportation. Because we would not have the drivers available to add. Um, that doesn't mean after Friday, once we receive the data, if those numbers come down. Um, we'll be able to evaluate it again, okay? Now, if you look at those two students, these two students live in the Ashwood um ponds area, down off of a hundred eleventh and uh two forty-eight there. Uh, technically, they're classified as walkers. There's no hazard along the way. But due to some ongoing development that started over the summer this year. Uh, we didn't want the students walking past, you know, bulldozers, cement mixers, and large construction crews developing and putting up new houses. So they're on a annual temporary hazard right now. Um, but based on my last review of those houses. Uh, the the conditions would be be improved and they wouldn't receive transportation. So if those two students that live in that area um wanted to stay at Crown instead of going to Stalin. Uh, they would be walkers and they'd be free to do so without without transportation, because they would, they didn't have it uh prior to this school year. Okay, another area of concern is the current Granger students that would be eligible to grandfather into Granger, new school being Hill. Part of this presentation are some maps that we can, I can show you. Um, if you have any questions on a specific area. But there's a hundred and a hundred and eight students, hundred and nine students in that area. And again, uh, not only would it result in longer route times, but it would result in uh about two additional drivers. Um, again, just just not possible at this time to commit to. Uh, going on to uh Gregory, uh sorry, Fisher, we can support the Fisher area. Sorry, skipped over Fisher. Um, but there's twenty-one students that are currently at Fisher, if all twenty-one decided to stay at Fisher instead of going to Granger. We would be able to support transportation for that group. Um, jumping back down to Gregory, there's a hundred and fifteen students right now that are grandfather eligible that would, that would. Uh, go to Crown in the new boundary. Um, just, we we wouldn't be able to do it again. Another two drivers would be needing as. As well as adding some of those hundred and fifteen students to existing routes. Going down to Hill Middle School, uh, there was two, two areas, or three total areas, but two, there is broken up between Granger and Still. The ninety-six students that would, that are currently at Hill Middle School and a new boundary would be Granger. We would not be able to support them again. That'd be another two drivers. However, the seventy-four students. We have them marked as orange because we might be able to fit them on existing routes once we complete building them out. And depending on how many students, so if that number drops down to fifty or under, we might be able to support that. So once we get the final numbers, we'll be able to look at that a lot, a little closer and redo that evaluation for that area. Uh, moving on to the Stalin area, the fifty-seven students for Stalin that would now attend Crown. We feel that um it's yellow, we could probably squeeze them on in some of just distinct routes uh to get through the two, two-year phase out for those grandfather students. Moving on to Still, hundred and fourteen students at Still Middle School grandfather eligible. That would now go to Fisher, we would not be able to support them, but the six students that. Um, currently are at Still that would go to new, new boundary for Hill, we would be able to support them. So again, um, some of this discussion, you may have questions, but just something to think about over the next uh, you know, few, few weeks is. Does this have to be an all or nothing plan? You know, if we can provide it for certain areas, you know, if we, are we looking to do as much as possible? Or are we looking at it from, you know, if we can't do it, if we, if we can't do it for all schools at the middle school or elementary level or high school level, then we can't do it for all of them. Uh, for whatever reasons, okay? So we can go on to the next slide for high school. Okay, you've seen these numbers, three hundred and fifty-six students are impacted by the boundary changes. You've seen that slide already. Uh, go ahead and go to the next slide. If we were, if we were to provide transportation for all students that we identified that would be transportation eligible, which would be two hundred, two hundred and eighty-six students out of the three hundred and fifty-six students. Um, and if you notice, I broke them down by grade level. So if you look at that, most seniors drive. So potentially those eighty-nine students um may not be eighty-nine students total at the high school because a lot of them drive or drive with their friends. Um, so what that could potentially leave us with is about a hundred ninety-seven between uh next year sophomores and next year juniors. Which if that was the case, we'd only need about four additional drivers. You know, probably not feasible at this time, but again, once we get the real numbers from the elections on Friday, we can evaluate that area. If you see, it's really that area um that currently goes to Matia that the new boundary would be Wabonzi. Uh, what that area is, and we can go to that map here in a little bit. What that area is, is the Meadow Lakes area around uh the C E C and Still Middle School, this whole area between um Montgomery, Frontenac. Um, Meadow Ridge and Seventy-Fifth here. If we had to do them all, it'd be about seven drivers, okay? So if we had twelve drivers available to add to our need. That's what the middle school would, we'd be able to support the middle school, and then part of the seven would just be more work for those twelve. Um, but unfortunately, we, we don't know what next year is going to look like with our driver. We may not even have what we have this year. If if uh drivers retire, will do a different industry and seek other opportunities, but. We we meet with them regularly. I'm always in dispatch centers and talking with them. Many of them have, um, you know, me as a friend on Facebook, and anytime they have questions, they reach out. And I believe it's because of the relationship that we've established with them, is they they truly feel like they're part of the team. And even though their check may say first year, they truly feel like, you know, Indian Prairie two oh four employees. And that's, that's, that's the relationship that we wanted to build with them over the past five, six years. So if we go to the next slide, this is kind of a summary of everything that we just went through, how many reside that was evaluated by R S P. Uh, the twenty-seven oh three number of students that were impacted by the boundary change and how many would be grandfather eligible that we looked at. And out of those, how many would potentially be able to receive transportation if we're able to support it? Uh, if you want to go ahead and then go to the next slide. You know, go ahead and go to the next slide, Clayton. Thank you. So it looks like it's a little small on the screen, but what this is, is just the the look on how the phase-out plan works and what current fifth, fourth graders going in the fifth grade. And what their school would look like until they graduate. Um, so current fifth graders would stay, they they have the opportunity to stay at their current school, and then when they go to sixth grade, they would go to their new middle school. Uh, current sixth graders, current sixth and seventh graders at the middle school have the opportunity to stay at their current school. Um, and then by school year, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five, they would all be at their new high school and their new boundaries. And then for the high school, uh, because we're going to do current uh freshmen, sophomores and juniors. Uh, that three-year plan would end uh after the the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So by twenty-five, twenty-six, all grandfathering would have been phased out. Um, so if you look at it from a transportation impact, elementary would have a one-year impact, middle would have a two-year impact, and high school would have a three-year impact. But again, potential for only a two-year impact due to seniors within the uh high school. Uh, areas. What I'd like to do is just kind of give an example of an evaluation map. Um, and if if the board members or Dr. Tally or anybody else has questions. Then we can go to specific slides and then I can answer the questions the best to my ability tonight. Um, uh, Clayton, can you go to page fifteen of the PDF? And I just want to kind of give an example of what was it, how every, all forty-eight areas were evaluated. And every area map is part of this presentation that'll be made available to the public after tonight. Go one more or go, go up one more slide there. Uh, Brookdale, go that one. Yeah, that that one's kind of easy because it's kind of condensed. So we had to look at the current Brookdale boundary, which is that kind of light purple uh squiggly line that goes and goes around. And as you can tell, some of these are much-needed boundary adjustments to make it a little bit more cleaner and uh continuous. The yellow shaded area or filled area, that's the new book Brookdale boundary. And the uh kind of light purple uh area is the new Longwood boundary, okay? The red circle that kind of loops around is the one point five mile area from Brookdale. So if you look at how that circle encompasses. It's the the little white, white and black dots are students that live in within the areas. Uh, they're within one point five miles, but these students would be exposed to a hazard. Uh, whether they need to cross, cross uh Route fifty-nine or um or other major intersections. If he, what we're looking for is the overlap of that fuchsia uh line. And the new boundaries for Longwood, which means is those students currently, those dots currently attend Brookdale. But they would be attending Longwood. So we had to see what opportunity would we have to get them to Brookdale? And then we had to make some estimates to see on that north end of the new Brookdale boundary. Would we be able to support adding sixteen students within these two areas to existing routes and not creating an additional driver need? Okay, so we had to do that for all forty-eight er, for all forty-eight areas that we had to evaluate. And then at that point, some of those higher number areas that we identified as orange. We actually had to start building next year's routes, creating additional databases. Creating additional G I S maps and boundaries for next year's route scheme. Seems easy, but it's it's actually not as easy. Our server team, our technology team, it plays a vital role in in a lot of that, maintaining the databases and making sure we have backup. Um, and not only that, is how how does future um. Maps apply to future maps. They need to be separate, and at some point, we kind of got to ditch the old and go with the new. So we need to make sure that those are backed up daily. And ready for E S Y, because that's the next big school year per se. Okay, so I'm going to just stop there, uh, ask the board for any questions on on what they, what they think about the information that I presented tonight. Uh, if they want to see some more areas that we had to evaluate, we can go to those um as well. So I'll open it up for questions.
I'm starting with Jane. Um, Mr. Johnson, I just want to start off by thanking you first for the immense amount of work. You and your team have put into this and have continued to do through a driver shortage of. I don't think there's enough words we can, I can possibly say um to thank you on behalf of our community for what you do. And thank your wife and your family for the time that they've sacrificed with you. Uh, I appreciate your presentation because when I first looked at the deck of slides, I have to admit, I was kind of, I was having trouble understanding the tables. But your presentation really clarified so much of my, uh, so many of my questions. I guess the one question I have that I was thinking about when we were discussing grandfathering. Um, originally is. Um, any type of data analysis or. Um, any type of data analysis or understanding of our students who really rely on transportation. Um. And thinking about it from that equity standpoint of ensuring or looking at the, the numbers to see if it's possible to. To make sure if, if we're limited in our resources and if we had to go that route. Um, it, was that considered, is that something on the table? Um, to be considered in the future?
Yeah, it, it was. Um, we looked at, you know, not only gender, but uh free and reduced uh, you know, income eligibility. Uh, we looked at uh, uh, race and. What, what we first had to prioritize is do we even have the resource, which is a driver to support that? Yeah, there may be. A low income family that there is no other way for them to stay at their grandfather's school unless there's transportation provided. Um. And the, the first, the first part of that evaluation is, do we even have the available resource? Um. Part of that is also combining some, some opportunities with even though a, let's just. An example, let's just say we have a Longwood bus. Up in, up by uh, by deal picking up a student, would they be able to pick up? A student, drop them off at Brookdale as a bus stop? And then go to Longwood. Um, again. It, it could potentially move some wrong, longer route times, but yeah, there's, there's no cookie cutter. Uh, solution. Some of the other highly populated areas, um, going back to. Uh, the Gregory and Crown area over in Ashbury Park for the middle school. We thought about, okay, are we able to do shuttle runs? Like take one bus driver and. Those students would be responsible to getting to like say Patterson. And then we pick up the students. On a twenty minute rotating basis. Um. But again, it was always resulting in additional driver need. So what we would like to do is wait until the true numbers come in for the areas that we just can't commit to at this point. And then once those numbers come into. Then make a little bit more determination on what's available and resources are available now. That's a cart and a horse, chicken and egg type of, a type of deal for some of our families and I truly understand that and. You know, the only thing I could do is plead with you that I'm looking at it from every angle, you know. We were, I was even looking at it again, you know, this morning uh before I had a few meetings, but. But just at this time, it really hasn't changed uh because it always results in an additional driver need so far for some of those higher populated areas.
Now, I thank you so much for that explanation. Um, Lori, I have no other questions.
Yeah. Ms. Dumbing.
Um. Ron, I just have to echo Ms. Shane's comments uh of your commitment and the tediousness that you. Input into this because it is um, it, and I hope that our, um, just on behalf of the community, this, this really means so much. For something that was, we have not been able to offer in the past. Um, and, and so while it, 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 it. It's difficult, um, I know, but you put in so much work, so thank you. My only question was, is. If we find that in some areas where. We've planned, we, we've looked at the numbers and we don't have quite as many. Decide to take advantage of grandfathering. Do we have any, I, I know it's going to be hard to say, but do we have any wiggle room, even if it's not? To, to look at some of those places where we are in red potentially or orange. Is that even possible if we find that? We don't have um as many take advantages as we. You know, look at the number four.
Yeah, absolutely. So, so that's in. And some of that is too, what I, what I get a little fearful of is making that assumption today. Is our families not choosing grandfathering because we can't provide transportation or can't commit to it tonight? To give them an opportunity. So they may say. Well, I can get transportation to my new school, so we're, we, that's important to us. So that could potentially skew those numbers and then. You know, come, you know, next month. When we have the true data and we make that evaluation and we're able to provide it. I think we're going to hear from some of those families that said, well, if I would have known and. That's kind of what I meant by that chicken or the egg for some of those red or orange areas is I wish I could do something. I wish we had. Uh, a slew of applicants coming in. Maybe that's our plea to the community is go to our website and complete a bus driver application and if we get twelve. We could do it for the entire community. Um. But I know Dr. Tally has done some of that uh pleading with our community to. Drive, drive our students to school within school buses. Um. But it is going to be an ongoing evaluation and I wish I can give those areas a little bit more um guaranteed tonight. I just unfortunately. I have to, I have to understand what resources that, that we have that are limited. And I know Mr. Carrubus on January tenth was extremely vocal and understanding of what that looked like. And I believe that's why he voted no on the grandfathering plan is because he was concerned that if we're, can't do transportation then. Um. Because of the drivers just aren't there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we'll go to Mr. Carrubus.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Johnson. One area of inquiry um is. Do you need to, or have you worked with the city? On determining some of the revised walkability. Um, aspects with some of this, since we are changing some of the maps. Um, I know walkability is kind of the, the inverse of, of busing. And you alluded to that with hazards and stops and traffic. Um, so we've got the dynamic of the one and a half miles. Um. But do you need to work with the city on determining some of the walkability with our new um boundary maps?
Yes, uh, I have a good relationship with the city of Naperville's Ted Group and I also have a good relationship with the city of Aurora's uh traffic engineering team. Uh, we are consistent, especially in the city of Aurora, when they apply for. The Safe Walks to the School Grant Program on making some of our areas more. Walkable as opposed to having a hazard situation. An example would be the Stonebridge Boulevard area by Granger and. Uh, Brooks where. Students within that area receive transportation because of multiple, what's, what's called a combination hazard of crossing a roadway uncontrolled. Or lack thereof sidewalks. So we've been working with them for the past four years to get a grant approved to provide some traffic control devices as well as. Uh, additional sidewalks. Um. The city of Naperville, uh, they provide safe walks to, safe. Walk maps for elementary buildings and they're posted on the city's website and they also have posted traffic control plans, which is nice. And anytime that we are evaluating. I've already heard from their engineering team about the new boundaries and uh, once we get those, those areas identified. Working with them on creating safe walk maps or updated safe walk maps for some of the schools. Um. We have four areas that we identified for the middle and high school that I need to do a uh hazard study on. Uh, Illinois Department of Transportation Serious Safety Hazard Study on. One of those areas, uh, I posed the question. There's a, there's what's called the manual and uniform traffic control devices where. It determines on how and where and when you place a traffic control device and if we're able to put a uh, a four way. Red light stop, even though it may be in close proximity to another one. There's, there's what's called variance or warrants that allow for pedestrians and the volume of pedestrians within a given time crossing a roadway, so. Those conversations are ongoing. Um, it's part of all of this evaluation. Like I said, it's, it's, it takes, it does take time and I wish it was just a. Kind of paint by numbers type of thing, but unfortunately not. And it involves a lot of, a lot of parties, right? It's, you know, the city is invested in this and I know they've received some communication from our community. Uh, asking what they're able to do, but. I gotta say, both the city of Aurora and both the city of Naperville, their teams, their engineering teams that I've worked with, they're extremely supportive and kind of waiting on us to provide. Some more data to them so that they can jump in and assist as well. So yes, is the short answer.
That wasn't the short answer.
Yeah, yeah, the, the end of that, yes.
Um. No further questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Ms. Grover.
Thanks, Ron, for the presentation. Um, yeah, it helps a lot when making a decision, so. To summarize, can we see the elementary chart again?
Yes, uh.
Colors?
Yep, so if you want to go to slide six.
Yeah, that's one. Okay, so to summarize. Everybody in elementary, I know you had the colors green, definitely yellow. Um. It was more yes or no, it was more yes and orange, you said. More than likely, so elementary, everyone is pretty much set.
Mm-hmm, we, we, uh, uh, if you said, Ron, what do you commit to tonight? I'd be able to say the uh. Rising fifth graders, we'd be able to provide transportation across the thirteen schools impacted for these two hundred and twenty four students if they all. You know, because we're looking at it from a hundred percent, right?
Right.
So we'd be able to commit to that tonight.
Right, okay. And then it was, um, middle school was an issue because there are a lot more middle schoolers. Um, so we were unsure about the middle schoolers. And in the high school, um, it was again unsure because there was a lot of red in there I saw.
Yeah, so if you go to the middle school slide, which is two slides up that has the color coding. Uh, if we, if you said what middle schools would you be able to support tonight, I, I, I'd only be able to commit to Fisher and Stalin. Because the other areas. I mean, other schools. If, again, if we're looking at an all or nothing. Um, I, I need the actual information to continue the evaluation. However, if we said. Well, it, do as much as you can, I'd be able to add that s- current still those six students that would be going to Hill. We'd be able to support the six, but I would still need the real numbers for the hundred and fourteen.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I just wanted to summarize so it would make it easier for the parents. Um.
Yeah.
One thing, one thing you had mentioned and I, you know, as you were talking, I thought about it, about the high schoolers that you, you do, do usually drive, like the juniors. And the seniors, um. So, and I don't know if this is in your realm, it might not be, but I was thinking of. The juniors and seniors who would be great, going to their grandfathered school. Along with the juniors and seniors who, whose homeschool it would be, um. How would parking work? I don't, and I don't know if this is in your realm or not, it might not be.
It, it does go into the timeline of this Friday because there is staffing and scheduling that also plays into all of this. You know, I do have the transportation component of it, but you are also looking at. Which students? Will be moving, which students would elect to stay, right? So you kind of have two moving targets. For every building that has grandfathered eligibility students. So if you're looking at like the high school. The minimal impact for like Wabansee and Miqua, it's really not that big of a deal, but. If you look at the students impacted for um, the, the fifty one students that. Could stay at Wabansee and then the two hundred and uh, the two hundred and ninety nine students. That may move to Wabansee, you know, that's, that's. You know, three hundred and fifty students, so you know, that's, that's an example of what could happen at Bonsi if. All grandfathering decides to go to their new boundary, but the Wabansee decided to stay, so. Um. There's some moving targets, it's, it's not totally in my realm because there is some scheduling and staffing implications on that and notification of staff, all that kind of fun stuff. Um. But, yeah, I mean.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rising.
Hey, Ron.
Um, hey.
Jeez, and, and people thought transportation was easy.
I love when, I love when parents call me and tell me I have the worst job in the district.
Um. Okay, actually, uh, this perfect slide, so. Um, I, I, it kind of like I said Natasha did, I just wanted to just to do another clarification here, so. If I'm looking at Hill Middle School, right? And those Hill Middle School kids, that ninety six that's in red. That's going to be, you know, they're going to be reboundering for the Granger boundaries. However, that ninety six represents. Those students that are grandfathered at Hill Middle School. So in other words, they can stay at Hill Middle School because they're grandfathered to Hill Middle School. But what that red represents is that we cannot guarantee right now transportation for them at all.
Yeah, because that would result in two additional drivers.
Yeah, no, I, I just wanted to clarify for, you know, again, if people went back to watch this, that. If they're, they're, they're one of those parents that, you know. Now they're reboundering for Granger, but their kid can still go to Hill, that they understand that they may be one of these ninety six here.
Uh, and if you, and, and really quick, uh, Clayton, if you wanted to go to page thirty four. You know, just kind of look at that as, as an example. Uh, looking at Hill, Granger and Still. Right there. Okay, so this is the, this is what was evaluated for Hill Middle School. Uh, you know, that ninety six that lives in the. Blue area where, if you see where that's kind of at, uh, right off of Ogden and kind of the mall behind the mall there. Um. We really just don't have the capacity to pick them up because of how the new Hill boundaries are. You know, if you look at just behind uh the mall area there. We're going to have some routes that will run there, but it won't be enough to fit ninety six and then. Over in that uh southeast corner of the new Hill boundary. There may be some capacity, but I'm guessing we're going to max out those routes because of timing. Um, when those, when those, when those routes come from Matia and pick those students out, there just may not be. A pairing for those students. Um, and then the same thing for, for the still, the students that live in that still boundary. If we added those students to that southeast new Hill boundary. We may be able to squeeze them on with minimal impact, but then there's absolutely no way. For the students that, those ninety six students that live, um. In the Granger boundary.
Um. And then I, I, I guess my. Only other question, if you will, um, it's probably more of a Dr. Tally uh question. If Dr. Tally, I just go ahead and get your attention. Um. Uh, because I, and I ask this just because I, I'm not impacted um. By any of the boundary changes and frankly, I don't pay attention to a lot of the school communication. That's kind of my wife's part of the job. Um, but uh. There, there has been. Quite a bit of communication for people to, you know, uh. Notify us if they want to be grandfathered. Um. I'm assuming that, you know, before Friday. We'll also maybe include, and I know Lisa's on the uh, phone too, our communication director. Um. I'm, I'm assuming we'll put something in there like, you know, the board gave a presentation about transportation or. Or if they have questions, the principals will know that they can direct them here, right? I, I'm just, I'm concerned about that people make sure that they. Fill out that grandfathering thing and if they do have transportation questions that they could either. There's, there's resources available for them.
Yes, of course, and when we sent information to parents about uh making the selection. Um, we provided them with the name uh and contact information for someone that they can reach out to. Um, and I will share um that person Catherine. Shared with me the other day how a parent said, this was a very easy process, so. Um, they are, do have the ability to reach out, um, and we'll, we will gladly answer, respond to their questions.
Okay, appreciate it. And yeah, please, if anybody's listening. If you need work, we need bus drivers. Thanks, Ron.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Fazdick.
Thank you. Um. Mr. Johnson, I'm just going to echo what all my fellow board members have said at this point. Um, in thanking you for the enormous amount of work it took for you to put together this potential scenario. Right, and uh, future thank you for the work that will come as each sort to figure out. Which student will go where when these responses come in, so thank you very much for that. Um, and for giving us all of these detailed maps and graphs and stuff, et cetera. That help explain that and hopefully that's helpful for parents too. Um. My only real question is, how often? And in what way will the community get an update on what percentage of the grandfathered students? Um, end up do being bused. I know individual families will learn that as the pieces maybe fall into place. Um, but when will there be a community update on that?
I would say after I receive the data that is submitted, final this data that's submitted on Friday, I'm going to go back and evaluate the red and orange areas. Because those green and yellow are, I believe we can support. Um. And it's probably say about four weeks after I get that data, maybe we do another update like this, um, would be a good. Good, a good item to put on the agenda. Um. And everybody here is the same message as opposed to, you know, I'll just email Ron and Ron's never in his office, answers phone kind of thing.
All right, well, that's it. Thank you so much.
So like.
So like everyone else, I really thank you for this. It is incredibly complicated and people have no idea. Plus, thank you so much. I know you get up at the crack of dawn every day to make sure that we have buses to support our students in the schools and, uh, it's a thankless job and, um, you probably hear lots of complaints in that, a lot of thank yous for what you do for us. But it's so critical. Can you go back to that, um, colored slide like maybe middle school?
Yeah. You want to go to slide eight? Right there. Yep, there you go.
Okay, so I am, as you've said, uh, multiple times, everything is dependent on, um, choices that the families make on the eleventh. Um, because if you have a low number that's like grandfathering, then maybe, um, some of these red areas would change to, uh, a better color. Um, but the colors that are green and orange and yellow, there's no um, chance that those will get worse.
Correct, because this is evaluating a hundred percent of the students that are attending our schools this year that are grandfather eligible.
Right. So if I'm in the twenty one there, that's the Fisher Granger, I can, I can completely assume I can have, um, transportation if I select grandfathering.
If, if that's what the board and Dr. Tally would like me to do, um, that's kind of where my question was. Is this need to be an all or nothing thing, or are we going to do as much as we can for the community? So even though hypothetically say we can't support the Hill Middle School Granger area, but we can support the Hill Middle School Still area, is that okay? And if that's okay, that's how my evaluation will go, for sure.
Okay.
Or if we can do it at, let's just say we can do it at Fisher, but we can't do it at, um, Chrome. Is that okay? You know, I, that's a, that's a tough question for me to answer. Um, within the parameters that I have my position.
Yeah, and I didn't hear any board members saying it's an all or nothing. But I guess I'll, I'll open it up to see if any one has any thoughts in that direction. Otherwise, you know, I was hearing a lot of happiness that you found support for as, as many of these as you could right now. But does anybody have any other view on that?
Yeah, Mr. Johnson, I need to see, I would like to see, um, some dollars related to some of these decisions. You know, I know we're, you know, being able to do it um, includes financially. And so I think we need to consider uh, what, uh, the financial impact is as well, even, uh, as part of this. So I think we can partner, um, on a later presentation as the numbers solidify. And, uh, as our budget gets more definite for next year, to make some of these, uh, more informed decisions. So I would like us to have a report next time when we um, and decide on some of this, uh, variability to include a financial aspect.
Absolutely. Um, obviously, the biggest piece of finance is when you add a full driver. When you add a tier to a driver, it's a lower cost. Um, and right now, if we committed to orange, yellow and green, we're adding a tier. So you're, you're talking, you know, probably a couple hundred thousand dollars. But yeah, we can set, we can solidify that for sure as we get closer to what we're doing.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, if I'm a, a family and looking at this and transportation as an issue, it's like the colors are a strong indicator, I mean, that they will be able to assume or not assume transportation and, um, but the red ones could change if people have, uh, you have significantly different numbers or, um.
Yeah, I guess, I guess if I was going to make a recommendation and we're saying that it's not an all or nothing thing, regardless if it's by level or by school or even areas within a school. If I'm a family and I see red, I would say I cannot, I cannot make my decision with, with transportation being provided. Now, if you're green or yellow, and again, we're going back to an all, if we can just do whatever we can, get as many students on a bus as we can. Um, green or yellow, I would say you can, you can go ahead and make your selection with transportation provided.
Mr. Krubis, are you, um, concerned that the green ones would cause expenses that we would? I mean, I guess I'm, I'm just trying to think if I'm a parent, like, can I look at that green box and go, I'm solid? Or is there, um, financial concern that we uh, might turn that green box into not green because there's a cost?
Well, I, I, I look at it not as much from the parent standpoint as from the board's standpoint.
Oh, I, both. I mean, I look at it both, but, um, these parents have to make a decision on the eleventh. And so I'm trying to understand what that green box really means to them.
If, if we look at just the yellow and green areas tonight and say, what would I look on a financial piece? I can provide that by the end of day tomorrow at the latest Thursday and just give the board an update and say, this is what green and yellow would, what the impact would be financially. If you look at that, we're not adding drivers, but we're just going to add a couple tiers at the elementary level. And on an annual basis, that, that number is going to be below two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Because all we're doing is adding a, a tier. So like, let's just say, for example, it's for a two-tier route, meaning a driver has a middle school and a high school. And now we need an additional elementary route to support the grandfathering. That route would be, let's just say, fifty thousand dollars on an annual basis for that driver. But now it's going to be fifty two thousand dollars. So it goes up in small increments as you add additional work to an additional drive, to an existing driver. The minute you add an, an additional driver, that's where the expenses get big. So if we were to add the twelve drivers, at about sixty thousand dollars on an annual basis for twelve, you are looking at a very large expense. And that, that would be at the max then, so that could be your range.
To, to clarify further, Ron, what, if any specific direction are you looking for us for tonight on a consensus basis?
Yeah, I, on a consensus, because obviously there's nothing up for approval. And if the board says, I think we should do as much as we can, well, then that's the direction I will go, right? And I'm going to continue to evaluate the orange and red areas. And as, as those numbers come in and they're lower, that now they move from red to yellow or orange to green, and we can support that. I believe in the, within a month, maybe four or five weeks, that's where I'm able to get those numbers and evaluate those areas. We do another present, presentation similar to this, but just on the red and orange areas that are identified tonight. Now, that doesn't give our families any stability for making a decision by Friday. But that's just the situation we're in unfortunately. So for the direction piece, it's, I guess the discussion amongst the board members would just need to be, what do, what do you want to do? Given the information that we have available tonight within green, yellow, orange and red.
Yeah, I mean, the one piece that's missing is the cost for the green, yellow, orange or whatever. And I, but we're hearing it's, it sounds minimal. I mean, not that anything's minimal, but two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, you think two hundred and fifty thousand on a twenty-two million dollar budget. So two hundred and fifty thousand is a lot of money, but when you incrementally have that, you get about fifty-five percent reimbursement on that from the state. The actual impact on a taxpayer isn't as much as, as you would think.
I do just have an additional question. Um, just so I understand the scope now, are we, is there a possibility that we, if these groups are in green, that after looking at the monetary piece, the, these families are later told we can't do transportation? Are we committing to transportation firmly on these green pieces right now?
Well, we're not voting, but it, it is consensus and comments to Dr. Tally and Ron.
Thank you. So, uh, so as Ron mentioned, the, what, what we would like to know is from the board, your belief about being able to provide transportation for as many as possible or none at all? And, um, as shown by Ron's color graphs, we know that the green and the, um, green and the yellow are more likely to be able to be provided. And so Ms. Fostick, to your question, um, the consensus for us would be very helpful to know, are we willing to go with as many as we can do or, um, we only can provide it for all?
But, um, yeah, so I mean, answering that as many as we can do, we can't answer without. That means that make all the red ones also green or whatever. So there's a jump in expenses and costs, right, when you get to that piece?
You, you, there, yes, but some of the reds we may never be able to do just because we won't have.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we're looking to provide our parents and community with information to make a decision, if the consensus is, is saying, Ron, if you think you can do the green and the yellow, get as many green and yellow areas that you can, and those parents that live in that area can have a decision with transportation provided, but the other areas, you would not.
I support that. Thank you.
Okay, that, anyone else have any um, different opinion about whether or not we, he should try and do as many as the green and yellows as possible?
I, I have a point of, uh, clarification that I need. So let's say today we say with certainty, we can provide transportation to those who fall under green and yellow. Does that mean after Friday, we are not assessing the orange and red zones? Or we are trying to assess the red, orange and red zones um, to see if there's reduction in numbers so that we could provide?
Yeah, so, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I, I would say that if I'm a parent that has to make a selection by this Friday, the eleventh, green and yellow, I can make my selection with gearing, with transportation being provided. If I fall in the orange or red, I have to make my selection by this Friday with that, without that guarantee.
No, knowing, ho- ho- however, knowing we will continue to review the red and the, uh, the red and the orange will continue to be reviewed throughout the next several weeks.
Yeah, and I, and I, I fully am aware and sympathize with how tough that makes that decision for those families that feel they need tran, that they need the transportation. And then in three weeks, due to the lower numbers, because that has impacted their decision, now we're able to provide it. I believe we're going to have some feedback on that.
And, and a follow-up to that, so the, the future examinations of our current orange and red zones would also be conditioned on having budget in mind, right? And that, and that would be the discussion that would be presented to us that you're saying maybe five weeks later.
Yes, and keep in mind, adding drivers is really not, is not a feasible plan. We just, unless all of a sudden, we, like I said, we just plead with the community to sign up and get your, get certified. We pay for the full, full certification and testing and we, we, we give you sign-on bonuses. There's a lot of, lot of funding available for you. Um, now, if we get that, great, that then will, that gives us more opportunity to add drivers. But then, yes, it does have a financial impact and then I would be able to tell you what those numbers are compared to our contract rates. Now, if we're not adding a driver and we're adding a tier, those, those numbers are significantly lower in, in the expense model.
And I apologize if this was answered in some form or fashion, but in March, we're going to try to firm this all up, right? So we can give a definite, but again, that doesn't mean you couldn't still work on it over the summer. I mean, if, you know, I hate doing the what-if thing, but what if we got a bunch of drivers over the summer, you know? Um, so I, I don't know.
So, so I, it, again, I'm the transportation piece. Um, once families elect their, their decision, whether they're going to grandfather or not, that's going to impact our buildings for staffing and scheduling. So it's not like we can then open up another round of elections.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, thanks for bringing that up. Yeah.
All right, so then, um, the other thing that we discussed last time when we were talking about grandfathering is, um, once the decision is made on the eleventh, um, people cannot change their decision. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. It creates issues with staffing.
Right, so they can't go, oh gee, now he figured it out and he can get a bus that runs this area I want to change, so.
No, we, we have issues with the, the need to, one, um, section students into their classes and schools, which impact the, the teachers that we have in the buildings. And then we also have the issue of a certain deadline by which we have to rift teachers if we, uh, are finding we don't need as many as we have. And so it is a domino effect. And so it is important that all decisions are final. And as I have said before, I know sometimes people want exceptions to the rule, but once we do one, we have to let them all. And so the, this is a final decision.
Yes, I know that these boundary changes are difficult for our families, but you have, um, put forward a plan that offers extremely generous grandfathering. And this is like, I believe, the first time ever that we offered transporta, any transportation option for the grandfathering student. So, um, I think it's, um, it's, it's nice and I'm, um, happy that we can look at a way to accommodate these students. And, um, you know, I know some of them will be disappointed they're in the red box, but I think, uh, as you said, we'll continue to look at them, but they should assume right now that that isn't going to happen, so. All right, any last questions from anyone? All right, our last agenda item is legislative.
One second here.
Oh, sorry, head, go ahead.
Do we, Ron, do you have enough to move forward?
Yes, yes, I, we're going to say green and yellows are a go. And families, if, if you're in that, that boundary with green and yellow, these maps are going to be made available to the public after this meeting, so they can go and see the maps and see where they reside. And if they're in that green or yellow area, make their decision based on transportation being, uh, provided. If you're in that orange and red, you have to make that decision, uh, by Friday. And then once those numbers come in, I'll do an evaluation, we'll get another agenda item for another update so that we can not only provide an update to those orange and red areas, but also the financial impact for next school year.
And Natasha, do you have any, uh, questions?
No, I was just going to say earlier to Mark's point where he was saying, you know, bus drivers in the summer, if that would have an impact. But we have to remember, this is a three-year, um, for the high schoolers. It's a three-year thing, even if we get bus drivers in the summer, we might lose them. So we have to see what we have currently. We can't do the what-ifs. We get more bus drivers.
Yeah, if you, if you remember that slide that we did on the ten, uh, January tenth and then how I kind of recapped it, we're, we're trying to stay with what we have this year to be able to provide.
So sometimes it's not so much about money, although it could be, uh, when we know the numbers. But it's also critical, the bu, number of bus drivers we have and kind of increase that one year in a severe shortage.
If we were fully staffed with bus drivers and not combining routes, we have about two hundred and seven bus drivers we're putting on the road. And on any given day, due to COVID quarantine or vehicle absences or just natural attrition, and we were only putting about two hundred and thirty-eight to two hundred and forty on the road each day. And we were only putting about two hundred and thirty-eight to two hundred and forty on the road each day. I mean, so that's what we're short of what we truly need. So adding a bus driver really just adds to our shortage, right? Or not to our shortage, but is, is lessening our shortage.
Okay, last call, anybody? I can't see everybody, so I can't see who wants one. All right, so um the last item is legislative advocacy and Board of Education updates. Does anyone have anything? And if you do, speak up, because I can't see everybody's face.
No.
All right, Justin and I are meeting with um some students tomorrow. I, I was going to get it on the record that we are going to be meeting with some students to um. Discuss, revisit the student board proposal that they presented last year to the board last spring. Um, we paused that discussion during the boundary, the redistricting and the boundary discussion. Because there was already a lot going on at that point, but we're looking forward to having a discussion with the students tomorrow. And hearing from them.
Good work, yes. We're definitely interested in the student voice. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
There's a second.
Second, Mark.
All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone. I know we had a long week.
Thanks.
Only Tuesday.